I'd like to call to order a special town meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. First of all, I'd like to ask the town clerk to read the legal notice for the special town meeting.
Okay. Legal notice, Town of Summers, notice a special town meeting and referendum. All electors and persons eligible to vote in town meetings of the Town of Summers, Connecticut, the town are hereby warned that a special town meeting of the town is to be held at the Summers Town Hall Auditorium, 600 Main Street, Summers, Connecticut, on Tuesday, December 10th, 2024, at 7:00 PM for the following purposes. Number one, to elect a moderator. Number two, to consider and discuss but not vote on the following resolution. Amendment resolution authorizing an increase in appropriation and amount of general obligation bonds and notes of the town to finance said appropriation from $10,500,000 to $15 million for the HVAC and electrical system improvement projects, improvements project. The full text of the foregoing authorized resolution is on file and open to inspection at the office of the town clerk, Town Hall, Summers, Connecticut, for the use or inspection of any interesting person. All electors and persons eligible to vote in town meetings of the town are hereby fully notified that pursuant to section 7-7 of the Connecticut General Statutes as amended, the Board of Selectmen by resolution adopted at this meeting on October 17th, 2024, remove the foregoing resolution from the agenda of this special town meeting for submission to the voter for vote by voting machine. The question to be voted upon is as follows. So the resolution entitled amendment resolution authorizing an increase in appropriation amount of general obligation bonds and notes of the town to finance said appropriation from $10,500,000 to $15 million for the HVAC and electrical system improvement project be approved? Yes or no? The ballot label for said question shall read as follows. Shall the Town of Summers increase its appropriation and amount of general obligation bonds and notes to finance said appropriations from $10,500,000 to $15 million for the HVAC and electrical system improvement project? Yes or no? The vote will be conducted on Tuesday, December 17th, 2024, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM at the following polling places. Voting District One, location of polling place, Town Hall, 600 Main Street. Location of the polling place for all non-resident property owners eligible to vote will be 600 Main Street, Summers, Connecticut. Absentee ballots will be available in accordance with applicable law. Absentee ballots will be counted at the following central location, Registrar's Office, Summers Town Hall, 600 Main Street, Summers, Connecticut. Voter approving the resolution will vote yes, and voters opposing the resolution will vote no. Number three, to adjourn the special town meeting to vote by voting machine on the above question to be held on the date during the time in the notice polling places referred to above. Dated at Summers, Connecticut, the second day of December 2024, Town of Summers, Board of Selectmen.
Thank you very much for the reading. Good job. The first order of business this evening is to elect a moderator, and I open the floor to nominations.
Number eight, Tim Keeney.
Second.
There's a second. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? If no, although it's in favor of Tim Keeney being elected, the moderators say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Write down the names here. The next order of business is to consider and discuss but not vote on the following resolution. Do we have a motion to consider and discuss the, this is a resolution, I'll read it. It's an amendment resolution authorizing an increase in the appropriation and the amount of general obligation bonds and notes of the town to finance said appropriation from $10,500, no, $10,500,000 to $15 million for the HVAC and electrical system improvements project.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Krasinski, would you step forward with your cane?
Yeah, can we have an explanation of why the additional $5 million?
Yeah.
We didn't hear you.
I was looking for an explanation for why we've got an additional $4.5 million.
Yeah, my question is, there gonna be an explanation of why the additional $5 million?
Would someone like to answer that?
Do you want to answer that, Sam, or do you want me to?
Why don't you lead off?
So, Building Committee retained a project manager company and a building owner's representative. They did initial studies, they came back with a quote to install the HVAC in the elementary school. The quote for the full spectrum heating, ventilation, air conditioning came in right at 14.8 million. The alternative is just ventilation at the current 10.5. They could do ventilation for about, it was like 10.3, somewhere around there. So to add the air conditioning basically is an additional four and a half million dollars is where the increase is coming from.
Sam, do you want to add anything to that?
Is it important to note that we?
You want to step forward a microphone?
Sure.
Thank you.
I do just want to reiterate the fact that we did receive a $5.8 million grant from the state. So, you know, when we went out to test the estimate against the market, we did find out that we needed to add this additional amount to actually accomplish the full mission of the air conditioning.
Anything?
Yeah, I'm just gonna give you a little bit more background on what the Building Committee. We hired an engineer to design the system.
Speaking of the microphone, please.
We looked at designing new systems for all the schools. There was just no way the town could afford to do them all. So we picked the worst school, which is the elementary school that doesn't even have enough ventilation in the classrooms unless the windows are kept open all winter long. So that's the only way you're gonna get proper ventilation in those classrooms right now the way they stand. So we hired the engineer, they hired an estimator, just going back two years ago. They gave us a budget of the $10 million. So we went out for $10.5 million so we had a contingency. Well, in the meantime, they finished doing their design. We hired a construction manager to do an estimate to make sure we have enough money to do the job before we went out to bid. Construction manager came back at the 15 million, which we cut down, well, actually, it was more than 15 million. We cut some things out of it, did some value engineering, and brought it back down to the 15 million. The town has already approved the $10.5 million. We're getting the five, what is it? 5.8. 5.8 from the state once this is all done, which is reimbursed to the town. So the town's not gonna spend more than the $10.5 million that was already approved, but we have to have it, what's the right word for it?
Appropriated.
Appropriated to be able to go out to bid. So that's what I wanted to get across. We're really not gonna spend more than that $10.5 million, but we have to have the full amount appropriated so we can go out to bid legally. Does that make anything any clearer?
But we did, we did know we were gonna get a grant. I mean, when we did the original $10 million, we were anticipating spending only $5 million or so because we knew there was gonna be a pretty substantial.
We didn't have any guarantees of a grant when we went to the town for the $10.5 million.
There's no guarantees for anything in life, I'll tell you the truth.
Right, but, but.
But it wasn't a surprise, like, we knew originally that we were gonna get this grant.
And, but we had to get it in in time to be able to get into this round of budgets from the state.
It's important to understand that there's probably not gonna be another round of funding from the state. There was a big article in the.
Right, I just read that the other day.
So that we can't now, because it's, the bill is increased by $4.5 million, we can't go back to state, they have us more money.
Right.
If you do, they may get no money at all.
Exactly.
And lose our first grant.
Sir, the town clerk needs to know your name.
Paul Mahonowitz. Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir.
Yep. I hope that helps.
Thank you.
I didn't know you got it.
Tell the floor again.
Please.
Okay, I'm a little confused on this. We voted through the $10 million. When we voted through the $10 million, we approved it, we're gonna get a state grant. I don't know what that state grant is, but from here and right now, you're telling me a state grant was $5 million. So I would sit there and say, you added another $5 million, are we gonna get more of a state grant to the $5 million?
That's the point I just made, was that the state has recently, we thought about whether to go back and ask for more money from the state because the cost of the facility has increased. But because the state works in rounds, the last round, we got the 5.8 million. If we go back now and ask for more money, we're gonna probably lose the 5.8 million and not get any more money.
Yeah, we would have to give back the current grant and request a new one, but they just, they said, and I think it was back in August, and then the newspaper just had it in there this week, that there's most likely not gonna be a third round of funding. So we would give back the grant and then not be able to apply for a new one, is basically what it comes down to. So we can't get any more money.
So the state has made the decision to fund no additional monies towards air quality improvements for schools.
So words before, when we start out with this whole project, we, the town, we're basically on the hook for $10 million less five coming from the state. Now we're on the hook for $10 million.
That's correct.
So that's what we're gonna be taxed on, the $10 million.
Correct.
Correct.
Or the total cost.
You're always on the hook for $10 million. So you got the grant.
Right. I think that helps clarify what the situation is and what our options are, which are very few. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is to approve this amendment resolution that would authorize us to go to a referendum on the 17th of December, correct?
Correct.
And that's why we're here tonight. Basically, we're saying, put this down for a referendum and let the town vote on whether they want to spend an additional $4.5 million to get air conditioning in the schools, over and above air handling, which is what we've been told we can qualify for with the monies that we already have.
And also, the gentleman who was from that company explained that the ventilation is gonna be improved dramatically if we follow through with this for the kids. And that's why they're trying to do this, is because it's gonna help the kids, you know, be able to go to school and be able to have cleaner air. And that, to me, is a plus, you know, the kids are gonna have, gonna get a benefit out of this.
Well, there are two things. This air handling is the quality of the air being breathed. The air conditioning is the temperature of the air. So that, those are the things that we have to, we're already getting, and we've been funded, and we've approved a referendum to handle the air handling at $10.5 million. We're asking here for a referendum whether the town wants to spend an additional $4.5 million to make sure that we have air conditioning as well as air handling. So the referendum is really increasing the 10.3, whatever it was, to 15 million. So in terms of finances, it's, 15 million is the maximum amount of money we can spend. It can't go any higher. We've already got state money that's gonna be reimbursed, and it'll bring the total project cost down to around $10 million. That's what we will bond for, is $10 million. That's no different than the last two bonds we did in 2020 and 2014. So it's keeping in line with being very, you know, conscientious in terms of how much we're bonding. So I don't think we're overextending ourselves. I know the CFO has a lot of information on that, showing that there's literally a negligible increase in our taxes because the current bond, bond that we, bonds that we have now are going to fall off of a cliff in terms of payment in 2026. This project is going to start in 2025. We will not bond until the project is completed sometime in 2027. So while that falls off and this comes on, it's just literally no increase at all in taxes, so.
But I would assume no further borrowing, though?
Yeah, in this event here, if there's further borrowing, we come in front of everybody and tell them what that's going to be, yeah. Sure. Any further discussion? In the back, please. You state your name and your address in town.
Susan Peck, 91 Sky Ridge Drive. So I'm here tonight because I saw the sign out front that we were gonna talk about this tonight, but we did. Was it already two years ago that we started this process?
Almost three years ago.
It's almost three years ago. So are we ready now to officially start the work? Like, this would, this vote would start the work right away.
Regardless of the outcome, next Tuesday, April is the begin date. It just determines whether or not we begin and do an HVAC project or we do an HB project, is really what it comes down to.
Okay. All right, but we're ready to go?
We are 100% ready to go.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Susan Cowan, 135 George Wood. So I'm very confused, how was this communicated to voters? I was surprised that there was a meeting tonight and that there's a referendum. How was this communicated?
Did we notify them?
Notice is on the town website.
With mail to households?
I didn't get a mailing.
No, there was no mailer for it.
Is that a requirement, that we somehow be notified?
A mailer, no.
Something on the website?
It's been on the website. The resolutions have been on the website since they were adopted in October.
The notice was in the paper.
The notice has been in the paper. You know, it's been discussed in other meetings, both Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen.
So if I were to go to the website and look at the minutes from those meetings, I would see the discussion?
Yep, you'd see the discussion. The resolutions are attached to the minutes as well, as required.
And we discussed this several times as Board of Selectmen, too.
Any further people that want to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Joan Rivard, 74 Maple Ridge Drive. Two things to address the last discussion just there. There are still a good, fairly good-sized number of people in our town who really don't look at that website at all. I know it's there, but there's a lot of people you have to put, you have to send something to. I think half of the town does not know this meeting is happening or if there's a vote next week. So you have, I think, for something, it's not, you're not talking about a $10,000 bill here, you're talking about $5 million change. You have to find a better way to let the people in the town, even your sign out front didn't give you information on that, didn't tell you what was going on. But in regard to the $10 to $15 million, we've signed something, passed something for the $10 million, now you want it to go up to 15, and you're saying we might get five back from the state, but it doesn't look like we're gonna do that.
No, we've already got 5.8, 5.8 million from the state.
Yeah, we've got a confirmation on that.
So we're really only looking for 10 million, not the 15. If the cost is 15 million and you already have five, why aren't you happy with getting the 10 here?
We have to appropriate it. You can't expend it without the legal body of the town, which is the voters, and there's saying that you can spend it.
So we're gonna say, we want 15 million. When you get the extra 5 million, where does that go? Because you've already borrowed 15 million.
No, we wouldn't borrow 15. We would spend 15, 10 of which we would borrow five the state would pay for.
Oh, well, that should be a little clearer.
Yeah.
That should be a little clearer.
And we're not spending, and we're not spending it until you vote yes or no, which is next week. So for everybody, it's next, it's one week from today, you're gonna be voting on it.
We're talking $15 million, I want to talk about like four happens.
And it'll be appropriation, which is the ceiling, can't expend any more than that amount.
Yep, under the current appropriation, we can only spend $10.5 million. So we could do a ventilation project that would cost us about 10.3, of which the state would give us five, and we would borrow the other five.
So we have that going, we have that now.
Right. So what, so what do you, all right, so what are you taking it up to 15 for?
To add air conditioning.
So you are going to add $5 million?
Yes, we are, four and a half.
Instead of double, the cost to our taxpayer is doubling.
Right.
Yes, thank you very much.
The cost to the taxpayer would be $10 million.
And that's not, there's not extra money in that coming back to us?
No.
So you're asked, thank you, I wanted that clear.
Could be a bond that we pay over 20 years.
I wanted that clear, because I don't think it is.
So we're asking the public to vote on whether they want to spend an additional $4.5 million to get air conditioning for the schools.
And why wasn't this thought of before last November, when it originally went to a vote?
It was thought of, and we were told then that an HVAC project would cost about $10.5 million, so that's what we went to vote with. Then, once we brought in professionals and they began reviewing and estimating and so forth, is when they came up with the new number.
So the experts you had come in, gave you a figure that was two-thirds of what it is costing? What kind of experts did you get?
Unfortunately, one of the best in the state, and they were.
That's sad, that's very sad, isn't it?
They missed the mark.
Good point.
So should we still be doing all this if all of a sudden we're looking for a full third more of money? I recognize what the schools are all about, I've been in the schools, but is there some way to find some, a better expert who?
No.
It's 50, it's a lot of money for our town to spend.
I think what it comes down to again is, if you just want air handling.
I understand what you're saying.
We've got that paid for, it's a done deal. If you want air conditioning, there's another $4.5 million it's gonna cost.
And the fact that they didn't have that figured out, so when we went to vote for last November is almost a criminal action.
We didn't know this.
That's very bad.
Yeah, there was a lot of, there was a lot of variables that they, that the company didn't really plan for. They, such as it, they originally estimated it to be an eight-month project versus the reality of it being a 24-month project because the schools are occupied. I mean, 16-month difference adds a lot of cost. There was, you know, there was multiple variables.
Multiple issues that could have been not so bad.
These engineers who estimated it originally, and then the engineers who estimated it afterward have all undergone the scrutiny of the Board of Education, the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen. They've had to sit in front of these three bodies and explain in detail what happened, how it happened.
And you accept their answers?
And all three boards have accepted their answers.
There's a tweet accepting.
Yeah, I don't know that it was accepted.
I don't know that I've accepted their answers.
I don't think we accepted when we listened to it.
You, you gave in to them, okay.
Well, we were due some of the figures, as the superintendent told us.
And ultimately, we're putting it to the residents to make the decision.
That's the important part, I think it's the democratic process.
Sam, would you like to add some words to this?
Sure, just as part of the context to this whole story that we did.
Microphone.
We did issue a demand letter to the company that gave us the original estimate through our attorney, because we did act off of that professional, to recoup money for the services that they performed for the estimate that we acted on. So that we have issued, sent that from our attorney, and we're in correspondence for that. So you're not wrong, the estimate was not a good estimate, and we are working to try to hold them accountable for what they gave us.
Financially, or how?
Either to recoup some of the money that was paid for the services, you know, two lawyers are working that out right now.
We weren't happy either, to be quite honest with you, when we heard the presentations earlier this fall, okay?
Can I talk as a citizen?
Oh, certainly, please.
David Marty, resident 50 Springfield Road. Just a couple comments, is, when that, how long ago was that original estimate made?
That was 20.
About 18 months ago.
Yeah, it was like early 20s.
I just want to share with everybody, we've all experienced inflation unbelievable the last couple of years. I mean, this year, I found out my homeowner's insurance is gonna go from $3,600 to $5,000, $1400 increase. So it's, this isn't, you know, we're, none of us are happy with any of these situations. Second thing I want to comment on is that the state of Connecticut mandates that all kennels were dogs that are picked up or whatever, they have to be climate-controlled. They have to have heating and air conditioning. And I just want to go on record that if the dogs in town that get picked up, stray dogs have to have air conditioning, our elementary kid should. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
For the record, we put air conditioning on.
Good job, Derek.
Lisa Horan, 43 Shady Dell Lane. To the question about, you know, are you satisfied, do you think you've gotten good advice and you're satisfied? I go to, I get my info at Board of Ed meetings. I can't attend all the town meetings, but at Board of Ed meetings, they have had three different experts come. There's a project management company called Colliers, they are our, so our own rep. Then there's a construction management company, that's Gilbane. They reviewed the initial estimate, pointed out the reasons it was very off, the main reason being, the original estimate priced it to, for the work to be done with the building unoccupied, which can't, so that was eight months unoccupied. Taking it to occupied, it will now take 22 months. So Gilbane, the construction management company, reviewed the estimate, educated us as to why it was off. They have looked at pre-construction specifications, drawings. They're gonna put the project out to bid, so dealing with every single subcontractor, and they'll manage construction, they'll manage the project. The third expert is the engineer, that's CES Design, and they're the engineer, they designed it. So Board of Selectmen, Finance, and Ed have heard from three really well-known companies at Board of Ed meetings. There's unanimous agreement now that the cost is $15 million. That's to do it with the building occupied. I don't think there's any question that the work needs to be done, the air quality, we know how important, that it's a matter of life and death after COVID. If COVID taught us nothing, we know that good air flow and air movement are, can be life and death. And with climate change, which I assume we all agree is real, the kids are only, it's only gonna be hotter in the schools for longer periods in the fall and then in the late spring. And like Dave said, we wouldn't put dogs in an un-HVAC situation. So the work has to be done. Three experts, three reps from three highly reputable companies have said, this is the price, and we have a total number. The amount that the town already approved, plus the state grant, cover the estimate. We're not, the town's not asking us at this referendum to spend any more. The referendum is to authorize spending, that's all, it's authorize the town to spend $15 million. How, how the town is able to make up that financing, that's up to the experts who already know they're gonna spend the 10 plus that we authorized, plus the 5.8 from the state. It's not gonna cost any more than we already voted. This is just approval to say, spend the money at this price, go. That's, that's all it is. It's not to borrow a penny more. Right?
I think one thing you said that's not right is you say the work has to be done. Now, what, I.
My opinion.
At your, it's your own opinion, the question I see, the issue is whether the town wants to spend an additional $4.5 million to put an air conditioning on top of an air handling system that we've already voted and approved. That's the question.
Yes. With the original $10 million, though, we had planned to only spend about five, when we built out the projections. So I mean, this is additional.
We were expecting a $4.5 million that we would get from the state when it came in at 5.8, and we were pleasantly surprised.
Yes.
And then we were very quickly, you know, very saddened, and when we found out that it was gonna be another $5 million, so.
But we approved the 10.
10 and a half.
For, right, for air handling only.
No, we thought it was air conditioning as well.
Not, okay, but.
Okay, but not knowing we would get the five point eight grant.
We didn't know we were getting a five point eight. We knew we were going to get something, we had estimates. At the time, we were, we figured we would, we would end up borrowing about six million. Now we're going to borrow about ten. Get to this passage, we will borrow about ten.
Okay. But the town, to the, again, to the question of, do you feel like we're on solid ground here? From everything I've heard at meetings, we're on extremely solid ground with the expert advice that the board has gotten from three different companies at this point.
Yes, ma'am.
Ann Kirkpatrick, seventy-nine Nutmeg Drive. The understanding that I have, and I believe the Board of Education, but I'm only speaking for me, the original project of ten point four million, what the residents voted for was an HVAC project that included air conditioning.
That's correct.
Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So the town, we're not adding air conditioning and spending more money. That was in the project for ten point four.
Right.
Okay. So when we had these people come, the estimator came to several Board of Ed meetings. The first question I asked them was, so you assumed, when you put this project together to estimate the design, you assumed, without checking with the building committee, will the building be empty or will the students be in the building? Why did you not, why did you make that assumption?
Right.
And his response was, we should not have made that assumption. So you take an eight-month project with all the costs going up, and it now, the same project, the design has been fine from the get-go.
Right.
This now costs twenty-two months of labor.
Yep.
That's really the bulk, yes. We did tell them, you know, I think your words were sharpen the pencils, whatever. We did go back with the number of ceiling tiles, why is this number? But the bulk of it, seventy-five, eighty-five percent of the reason was an eight-month project to twenty-two months. And we said to the town, we hope, we hope we will get a reimbursement. Because what we knew, the facts were, the evidence was, the only towns that got any state money the year before, when they submitted the project, were towns like Ellington that had an approved project.
Correct.
Stephanie had already submitted the year before. We did not get anything because we didn't have a project.
Yeah, I believe that was one of the three requisites.
Now, it would have been easier if the state had told everybody that.
Yeah.
Okay, you, you submit this thing, it's not three or four pages. So we figured if we can get the town to approve this, we'll get, we'll get the reimbursement, which we did. Sixty-two and a half percent is what we get with the formula that the state comes up.
Yep.
So as a Board of Education, we figured, this is great. The town approved ten point four knowing there may be no reimbursement. So if you do the math, what we're now telling the town is, it's actually going to cost you less money than what you already approved.
No.
So I was just getting uncomfortable hearing a conversation that sounded like we're now adding air conditioning, we're not adding anything. It's the same project.
It just costs more.
That the town has already approved.
Yep.
Now the challenge, like this other woman said, is how is everyone going to know they need to come out next Tuesday and vote for this again? So if there's anything that the Selectmen or the Finance Board can do, it's, the Board of Ed can't send anything out and say, vote for this project.
Yeah, we're not allowed to.
So it's kind of in your hands.
Not allowed to advocate for it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak or any comments? Yes, Mr. Krasinski.
I think I know the answer, but I'll ask the question anyways. It's fifteen million dollars. Is this an engineering estimate or is this a quote?
It's an estimate.
Engineering estimate?
Yep.
Okay, so we may have one more surprise coming when we get the quotes, right?
We won't spend more than we are allowed to spend, no. I mean, if we got a surprise, it would be at mid-time and we would have to address that then, but.
Well, I'm just saying, the way things are going with inflation, I reflect now, we may be ready for another surprise.
Yeah.
Okay.
Inflation's going down.
Yeah, that is an estimate. I know, I've got to get up here. I've worked in the engineering firm, field and construction for the last forty years, okay? If the project manager does a good job with his subcontractors and works to get the best price, it may be less than what his original estimate was. He's not going to give us an estimate that's low and then have the bids come in higher and look stupid again. Again, well, this is a different company. So that's just what I, you know, it's possible that we get prices that are lower than the fifteen.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely it is.
So I think, I think this has been a good discussion this evening, and as Andrew Patrick mentioned, the clear issue is one of communication to the residents who are voting on this December seventeenth and to know what they're voting on, voting for. And we've got to get that message across. How's that going to happen, by the way? So we're kind of limited as to what we can say.
We are very limited.
Why don't you mention what that is?
We are extremely limited on what we can say.
Everbridge, notice. Yeah, we can't.
Yeah, you can send out Everbridge, but the most you can do is send out a reminder that says that today, that there is a vote, you can't, you can't tell people to go and vote.
Legal notice, we can Everbridge that.
Yeah, you can't tell people to go and vote because then you're advocating for them to come out and vote. You can, yeah, there's a lot of.
We can send a text to the patch and the JI and hope they'll cover it. I mean, we can't, obviously, it's their choice, but we could send them the explanatory text tomorrow and just ask them if they would run a story on it.
So what's the difference between a mailer for the referendum and a mailer for this referendum?
This one is governed by the, by the state of Connecticut as far as what you are and aren't allowed to say because you're borrowing money.
Money, yes.
When you're, when you're sending, when you're sending the mailer out for like the annual budget, you know, you can kind of say whatever you want to say because it's a tax, it's not asking people to borrow money. When you're, when you're bonding, there's a lot of other legalities that, that come along with it.
Well, I'd like to thank everyone for showing up tonight. Thank you for the discussion and hearing. No further business on the agenda, I'd like to adjourn. Thank you.